An ordinance amending Title IV legislation, Chapter 220, Council, Section 220.10 of the codified ordinances of the City of Freeport regarding rules of council.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Yes, this is an ordinance to, again, establish a requirement to be present for presenting issues to council during the public comment. We brought this forward. If we, basically, we have to pass, because we don't have any regulations in our current ordinances, this establishes a regulation for the, to be present. And that is, when we talked about the requirements for the AG's office under the PAC, is if we haven't been enforcing it in the past, you want to enforce it, because we have to pass the new ordinance and then go enforce it from that point forward.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Alderman McLanahan next to me. McLanahan, talk to me a little bit about what it actually says now. I have a real big problem of doing this if we eliminate the people that can't send in a letter. I believe that's very irresponsible on our part, but that's just me, okay? If the goal of this, something had to bring this up. And if it's Steve Carroll's letter, you don't say it's Steve Carroll's letter or it's something. So, we've done one thing, one way for a zillion years, and all of a sudden now it's a crisis and we've got to change it. And that's what I have a little bit of a problem with. As I read through this, I say, if it's derogative, or if it's slanderous, or if it's got profanity in it, no, that shouldn't be read. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. But I really believe that today, with technology the way it is, somebody ought to be able to sit there and type up on their computer a letter and go, and it comes off to you and you read it before council like we have for years. Just, you know, some, I guess all I'm looking for is, why do we really want to change that and eliminate a person's right to submit something to us?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
As I read, and I think this was the last thing that Manager Crowe had said. So, as I read it in its current form without any changes, actually, there is no right to send in anything and have it read. It actually talks about speaking, standing up and speaking at the podium. So, if we weren't to change anything technically under the language of it, we haven't allowed it anyway, but you're saying, because in actual practice, we've allowed people to have it read even though our ordinance doesn't allow it, that if we're going to say, okay, going forward, we're actually going to comply with the plain language of our statute that it's been for however long since they put it into place, that's why we'd have to make the change?
That is correct. So, once we establish a practice, even though it may be against what our current ordinance is done, in order to make sure that the PAC, that we, doesn't come down and rule against us, we have to pass the ordinance and then enforce that ordinance again from that, enforce this ordinance from the day we pass it. Because we have allowed it in the past, the PAC will rule and say, there's a past practice and we've established those past practices.
So, we got here by not complying with our current ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, whether or not you like the current ordinance, I suppose is a different discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
This could really put us in a catch-22. I understand where we're at. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. But just say the X number of people on the board that don't really go along with this, and we say, okay, let's put it in, and we've established it for X amount of time, whether that be one week, two weeks, a month, somebody tell me what that time is. And then, we don't have the votes to bring it back, guess what? You've got absolutely nothing. You're in a position that you, somebody cannot have something written. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
What I'm saying is, if we put this through now, the way it is, okay? And it goes through. Now, that's going to be, our precedent is going to be that nobody, at that point, has the right to speak to the council, which we're not saying they have the right to speak.
Well, they can speak to the council.
Or they can't send a letter in.
That's correct.
Pardon me.
That's correct.
And if there's certain people in the council that don't agree with that, and say, I'd really like to be able to have somebody put in a letter, you don't have the votes, or it'll never get there.
Well...
If I don't have five votes to get it back on, to say people can send in a letter, you're...
Madam Mayor.
So, either way, we're wrong.
Alderman Chesney.
Attorney Zito, is there anything that prevents an alderman from reading something into the record under public comments?
I don't believe there's anything that would prohibit that.
And there's also nothing that prohibits your neighbor coming, or your friend, or whoever, to read on your behalf. So, maybe what we're looking for is just maybe the simple language of, to insert there, "to be read by the clerk." You know, where it would say, "No written comments in advance or in a public meeting to be read into the record at a meeting by the clerk." That way, it's, you have to have some type of representation here, no?
So, the purpose, Mayor FMA? So, the purpose of this ordinance is to say that anybody can speak at any time, they can show up. Absent their ability to speak, they could have somebody come on their behalf, and they can speak for them. Absent that, they could have an alderman come, and they could read it into the record anyways, if they choose to under public, anybody can read under public comments, anybody in this body. Anybody that's in the audience, it doesn't have to be on their behalf, it could be on somebody else's behalf.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
I have to agree with Alderman Clem on this one. I am really concerned about limiting people to be able to bring in letters. Yes, we've had one or two of them that shouldn't have been read, and maybe something could be put in there to prevent that, but...
Well, that's what this is.
There is a number of constituents, but if I read it correctly, it means we're not doing letters at all unless you give it to the alderman and they leave it and read it in public comment, is that correct?
This would be no letter being submitted unless you were here, or a representation is here.
Okay. But there are, and I've talked to several of them since this came out, from my own constituents, who just simply cannot get here, and they don't, maybe they can't get anybody to come up here. And we're, I don't like the fact of limiting them being able to make a comment that way. And as was stated earlier, in public comments, I'm not saying anybody in this body would do it at this time, but, you know, we're not going to be here forever. If the alderman does not like what they're saying, what's to stop him from not reading it? This way, at least, we know that the person, or the person in the community, their opinion is heard.
Well, don't you think that the alderman is elected in that ward for representing the people? So, they really are, I mean, if you want to get down to it, you should.
You should, yes. I agree with you, Mayor. But as it currently said, I cannot support it.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
A question for council, and really, at the end of the day, this isn't the end of the world one way or the other, frankly, in which we have it. So, I don't want to spend, you know, forever on it. But I do have a question for council on that, SEL, not CIL. When we're, other municipalities, I think we've talked about this a little last time here. Are there other municipalities that have it, that letters can be read into the record?
I think there are other communities that will specify one way or the other there. Right now, I think the impetus was the fact that we don't have anything on the books that deals with reading a letter in, other than a past practice. So, this council needs to decide as a policy what it feels is right for it, to say one way or the other. It's been proposed that, you know, for various reasons, that, you know, this is, you know, the way that was drafted, that, hey, you must, someone must be present to speak, you know, to verbally present a statement. Whether it be on behalf of someone else or on behalf of yourself. But certainly, to the extent the council wants to deviate from that, that's up to the council.
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Attorney Zito, what's your experience and what's practice amongst the other clients that you represent?
Common practice.
What's common practice?
Just speaking for the actual communities that I've been in, they do read, they'll read a letter in.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Okay. I'm sitting here listening. So, we wanted to not allow a person who writes a letter not to be able to write a letter, correct?
They can write letters, and you're, any one of you can read it in.
Okay.
Or a neighbor, or, it's, there has to be a personal representation.
You want someone present. And, just a minute, so, okay, so he's saying the alderman would be the person at present to read the letter that the person wrote?
It could be.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. It could be him.
It would not prohibit you, no.
Could you say that again?
It wouldn't prohibit you from...
Right, right. I'm just saying that, as I heard, is that if a person doesn't have anybody, then the ultimate for that ward would be, could be the person to read the letter. Am I right or wrong?
Alderman can read, yes.
Okay. Would it be, now, this might sound, start way out there, but our city clerk used to read the letters when they came in, correct? Okay. Now, so if we, I do understand what you're saying, it does make sense. But it's not a violation of the freedom of speech or anything like that. I mean, I know it's out there, but no violation, but as long as the alderman's here, or he got somebody to read it for him, the letter could be acceptable, as long as it's not derogatory.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. I think one of the problems we have here is, when we've written into the record of the address by non-members, it basically says, "No questions shall be asked of the alderperson except through the chair. Any person making personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council," and so forth. That's in person, but it seems like some of the people that have written the letters like to do all that. And when that letter's written into record, who's going to filter that? I think that's why we've come up with this. I mean, that's the whole reason of doing that, is to get rid of some of that slanderous and abusive language from some of the people when they read these letters, and because they don't want to man up and approach the council themselves and behave themselves.
Right, because right now, our practice was, we'll just read it. But then that's, it's, how do you draw that line, then? You can't stop that, so...
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
How many letters have we have that fit into this category? Doesn't seem like we have a problem, does it? We're creating one. One person wrote a letter that somebody didn't like, now end the conversation, we can't let anybody write one. And who is a more independent person than the city clerk to read it? She's going to read what's on the paper, you know? Sally, or Alderman Brashaw, you're basically saying that if you get a letter and it's got some slanderous stuff in there, you're supposed to weed it out. What should you really weed out and what shouldn't you weed out? I mean, we're on a slippery, slidey slope here. It's obviously one thing, you know, everybody trusts everybody, you know? Or we wouldn't be here. I think this is all created over one letter, end of conversation, and if you want to take the slanderous stuff out, and the city clerk do that, that's fine. That's my humble opinion.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
It's in my humble opinion that it's not the end of the conversation, just because you say it is. That's why we're having this discussion.
Say that again.
It's in my humble opinion that it's not the end of the conversation, just because you say it is. That's why we're having this conversation. And I never said that you couldn't read it, or you shouldn't, I'm just saying that this is why I believe we got to this point. That's why I read that out loud.
You said that the alderman could alter the part that was slandered, or say something different than the part that was slandered. That's what, we're getting here where somebody's writing in a letter and somebody's going to read it and change it. What happened to the First Amendment rights? Freedom of speech, I can say what I want to, I can send it in, as long as I don't slander you on it? If you slander, take the words out of it. It's off of one letter, guys, that's it. End of my conversation.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
I don't know if one letter prompted this change, but if something is written or said that is slanderous, then somebody should be accountable for that. I don't think we should be reading slanderous comments into the record of this council or any of the public body. And I don't think we're trying to inhibit people's first right, or their First Amendment speech rights. People can come here and take the podium and say whatever they want. All this asks is that they take some ownership of those comments. So, I don't see this as a big sea change to the ordinance. Under the current and past practice, we just have to verbatim read the letter, if we're guided by past practice. And if it contains slanderous, or profane, or even spurious comments, then it goes into the record, and you can say that there's nobody more objective than W., but W. has some credibility in what she says, and, you know, when, if she's just regurgitating the words, I think that there are people that may put some greater credibility into that. So, I don't see this as a huge change in the ordinance, and I think I would support it if it came up for a vote.
Any further discussion?
Well, Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Ultimately, whichever version you have here, it's going to come down to a matter of interpretation and enforcement of what you got on the books. We already had on the books saying you needed to speak. Yeah, it shall rise and approach, shall rise and state his or her name and address for the record. We didn't follow it. We've got in here that it wasn't supposed to be any personal, impertinent, abusive remarks. We didn't follow it. So, I mean, if you want profane and slanderous in there, they may or may not be redundant. At the end of the day, I think it comes down to really, are we just enforcing what we've got on the books? And I think you can largely handle a lot of the issue through saying, we're actually going to enforce what we have on here. If there are individuals that have significant concerns that this is somehow suppressing voices or views, you know, on that, those are legitimate concerns as well. I don't, I don't think at the end of the day, we are suppressing that. But if that's the case, would there be any merit in continuing to actually maybe enforce what we have on the books, realizing that that would allow written comments in, but actually filter pursuant to what is in our code? Would there be any appetite for that, and seeing where that goes? And then, if it's still being abused, bring back up the ordinance and make the change. I'm just saying, would there be any appetite amongst the council for that? Or do we want it all or nothing, one way or the other?
I mean, because we've allowed it, we'd lose it.
I understand you'd have to read things. What I'm saying is, you can filter it through the actual language that is already in the code. I mean, I would argue there have been multiple read comments that would not be, that would not pass the filter that is already in the language of the statute. Are you saying that because we've allowed personal, impertinent, abusive remarks in the past, that we have to allow them in the future, but for an ordinance?
I think right now, because we don't have anything on the books right now, that's what's going to create the issue with any potential challenge to the PAC, is because we don't have anything. And then, all of a sudden, if we try to enforce the fact that a slanderous mark was made, and we say, no, you can't do that, the PAC would say, you didn't have a rule on the books, you're not allowed to enforce that, even though, let's say, it was very clear that this was profanity, or something that is not appropriate. But because we don't have it on the books to say, with regards to a written comment, one way or the other, that that's what's going to get us. We need to have something on the books. What it is, or what form it is, that's for the council to decide, but we need to put something on the books, or we should.
May I follow up?
Yes.
What we do have on the books right now, you're just looking to add a certain phrase, amongst other things, profane and slanderous. So, if we add profane and slanderous, and by the way, subtract and address due to the Attorney General opinion, will that largely get us what we're trying to do? What we're trying to accomplish? Or...
I think we're still missing, then, the component of written comments, that's all. Again, you know...
And then arguably, it's silent on, well, not silent, but if, there's nothing in here that if we were to, if we were to vote this down, anyway, I realize it's because we haven't been enforcing our code that we've got a problem, but you're in a conundrum either way. If you leave it the way it is, you've got a code that says one thing, but our actual practice doesn't have it. And then, on the other hand, you're saying, well, if we put in this new language, it's going to be too prohibitive. There's got to be a simple solution to meet both of those concerns.
In this way, it's enforceable when it's written, and so if we were challenged, we would lose if it's the way it sits right now, because we didn't enforce it.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Since, you know, obviously, there's a couple different opinions on this, why don't we just take and not vote on it tonight? Hold it over, and somebody type up a real copy of something that we can read?
Well, I'm not sure what you're asking for, because this is...
I'm asking for, everybody says, well, if we do this, and if we do this, and if we do this, let's write up a whole new thing of how we're going to do it, and then let's vote on that. It doesn't say, here, we're going to eliminate letters, or we can't have letters, or somebody can read the letter, or what we're going to do.
I don't know what you want to propose that would be different, though, that's what I'm asking.
I'll pass. I beat it to death enough. Thank you. I'm just saying, rewrite.
Further discussion?
Jesus.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Keister.
I think what Alderman Clem is asking is, there's a lot of differing opinions here about letting in letters and letting out letters. One of the old forms, maybe it allows it, maybe it doesn't, there's no clear, there's a little unclear area there. This one doesn't allow it at all. Can we look at this again and come up with one that will allow written letters periodically, written by, and evaluated by the clerk for the profanity and slander, and bring that back, rather than vote on this this evening? I think that's kind of what I would like to see now, is something kind of across between this one and what we had, that would allow them to do it, but also cover us as far as having it writing, what we allow, what we won't allow.
Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
I think what they want, basically, is an amendment indicating that written comments will be allowed, as long as they meet the other requirements of the statutes. I think what you're really asking for at the end of the day. Whether they'll make the motion or not, I don't know, but that's what I'm hearing.
Alderman Chesney.
I think it's just a matter of policy. I think there's really two ways we're going to go. Either one, we're going to allow written comments to be read into the record, or we're not. The vote before us would be that we don't allow written comments into the record. However, somebody could have representation, the things that we've already gone over. The only other option is going to be that we do allow, I don't think that there's really, it's either you allow it or you don't. I don't understand what the middle piece is.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
This would be probably a question for council. If we do allow letters into the clerk's office and have someone in that office screen them, does that open us up for even more liability through the AG's office? If someone would send a complaint, oh, you didn't read my letter? You know, and they felt that there was no derogatory marks or in there?
I do see some potential issues with that, as to who's screening it, and for what, and what's the standard to say what's slanderous, what's not slanderous, what's a personal attack, what's not a personal attacked? I mean, there's always, there's always a potential for a shade of gray. You know, I mean, certain things might be very clearly, that's a profane word, there's no question about that. But there's always the potential for something that's a little bit, you know, closer to the line. You know, so I see some potential issue there, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
I agree with Attorney Zito. I think it's a slippery slope when we assign any person, really, to start editing letters, or determining what constitutes a slanderous remark. But, and really, I don't think that we should be trying to truncate people's speech. We're only asking them to take ownership of it, take the podium and say it. I mean, they can say whatever they want, slanderous, spurious, whatever. But I don't think it's unreasonable to ask someone to stand up and say it.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
We're making the assumption that that person can come here and speak.
Well, they are their...
It's a little old lady from Pasadena that's home, and there's two foot of snow in the ground she can't get here. I'm just using that as an example. There's health issues, there's organizational issues, some organization may write you a thing, could be in support or non-support of something. I can't accept a letter.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
Well, there's no perfect solution, and I'm not suggesting that, you know, that we should try to hinder people's ability to address the council. There are other avenues, and people can use proxies, and then family members are called their aldermen. And certainly, you know, any alderman worth being elected or re-elected would accommodate a person like that.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
There have been several occasions, since I've been on this council, where people have gotten up to the podium and either made direct attacks, slanderous comments, or other derogatory things that have been called on by the mayor and stopped and shut down there. So, it's been done on a number of occasions. All we're asking for is to do the same thing for the letters. And if we can do it here when people are talking, why can't we do it with the letters? That's what, that's kind of what I don't understand. You know, it's, as a matter of fact, I think it was just a couple months ago that that was, one of those incidents happened. That people were shut down because of the language and the mannerism in which they were doing it.
So, are you suggesting that if, as the clerk reads something, we would stop her?
No. I would say that if we can sit here, and, again, and I'm not trying to make any accusations or anything here, but you, as the mayor, as by this ordinance, and I believe by the other one, are responsible for that, you make the decision. I believe W. can also do the same thing, or, excuse me, the city clerk. It's basically practice that we're already doing, we're just using a different person.
Madam Mayor.
I think Attorney Zito had something to add.
Well, it'd be something that... To be able to, that live ability to be able to...
Madam Mayor.
I guess I'm just kind of thinking out loud right now, as, you know, what are potential issues? If the letter, if you're saying the letters, when it's being read out loud, that the mayor would still have that authority to, on the spot, then, all of a sudden, if it's starting to get profane, or whatever it is, or if it's ahead of time to start striking what the mayor feels would be inappropriate, you know, or slanderous remarks there, I guess I'd have to think that one through a little bit more.
If I may, Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
What I was referring to is, we've done it on the council floor with one person, i.e. the mayor. Either the mayor can, if need be, edit the letters, or the city clerk can edit the letters, under direction, put in ordinance reform or something, if need be, to determine this before the meeting. To me, and maybe I'm wrong, but to me, it's basically the same thing. You're either editing live, or you're editing on paper. I guess I don't understand what the difference would be, either way.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I think my dear friend next to me, Alderman McLanahan, has offered something that may be something to get us through hurdle number one here, and then figure out hurdle number two, and that's basically amendment...
Well, yeah, Mayor. I mean, if the issue is whether we're going to want, you know, written or not, I'll just offer just a motion on an amendment, and see where the votes go on that. That's, I'll move to amend it, to add the following. Written comments may be submitted as long as they comply with the requirements of this section.
Second.
But also, that's the end of the amendment, however, actually, I would note, if we are going to do allow it, you should also amend it to put, where it says profane or slanderous, move to amend it to put profane, comma, slanderous, comma, or libelous, because libel is written slander spoken. So, if you're going to have a written amendment, you should have that on there. And then, you can discuss and see where the votes are on that, and I think that'll decide the issue, one way or the other, probably.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have an amendment, as stated by Alderman McLanahan, seconded by Alderman Keister. Is there any further discussion on the amendment only?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Okay, so this is a complete policy shift from where we were in the original form. So, now we're saying that as long as it's not slanderous, libelous, and... So now, we're saying that as long as it's not slanderous, libelous, and profane, and all the other fun things that we don't want, then we're going to allow the comments to be read into the record from the clerk. So effectively, we're...
Mayor.
Alderman McLemethan.
It would be a change from the current written form, and it would be consistent with somewhat of the actual application. In the written form, yes, as it currently applies, that we shouldn't have been allowing letters to be read in the record from the beginning. In practice, we have been allowing letters to be read. In practice, we haven't been filtering comments, for the most part, written comments, for any of the things that were already prohibited on there.
Okay. Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. To further up what you had said, Alderman McLemethan, where it says, "Any person making personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or slanderous remarks in person," I think should also include the libelous, just so that they, they are written approximately the same.
I'm sorry, which point was that at?
Under Section 2, second paragraph, towards the bottom. "Any person making personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or slanderous remarks," and enter the libelous in there as well, just so that the verbiage is the same as the written comments. Then, they can't say we're doing one for the other, and they'd be both be treated the same. That's what I'm looking for. Does that sound about right?
I think the difference is, with the slander, that goes to verbal comments, libel is in written form. Those are the two distinctions there, so if you're talking about written comments, you don't want libelous statements. If you're talking about verbal comments, you don't want slanderous statements there, so...
So follow up, you have to change the one word for the other in both of those? Wonder what...
I think it would be most appropriate for the section that talks about when someone is standing here live, making a statement, that they not make slanderous comments, but then, in the section that talks about someone who submits something in writing, that they will not submit any libelous statements, because that pertains to written statements, as opposed to...
That makes sense. Thanks.
Alderman Smith.
Do we have to have, do we have to have some dispositive vote on, on the amendment prior to suggesting some alternative?
So, Alderman McLemethan, are you comfortable with your amendment?
Well, I would be curious in hearing as to why that amendment might not be the best in light of potential alternative recommendations, but...
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
I'm finally at the point where I agree with Alderman Clem. Let's lay this over and get a couple versions, because we're spending way too much time on this, and this is turning into a City Council 2015 meeting, so...
Well, then, we already have a motion on the floor, so we'll have to have that retracted, if that's the case.
Sure.
Motion refer to the next City Council meeting.
All right, so now we have a motion made by Alderman Chesney, seconded by Alderman McLemethan, to move this to the next City Council meeting. Attorney Zito.
Council meeting, or committee meeting, I guess?
Council meeting.
No, City Council meeting, I think you need to have four...
Okay, so any further discussion on laying this over? Seeing none, all those in favor of laying this over to the next City Council meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. We'll move on to item number nine.